I call this meeting of the Almaron County School Board back to order. Do you have a motion?
We do, Chair Lee. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Acuff, seconded by Mr. Graham Page. We need a roll call vote for this, please, Ms. Thompson.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
And Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Fantastic. And we do have one motion coming out of closed session. I believe Ms. Spillman has that.
Yes. I move to direct staff to proceed with negotiating architectural engineering term contracts with Firm A, Firm B, Firm C, and Firm D.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Spillman, seconded by Dr. Acuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
You're slow on that one.
Next, we have our roll call. We'll start with Josiah Black.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Allison Spillman, at-large representative.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall Representative.
Judy Lee Rivanna District.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Graham Page, Miller District.
Chuck Pace, Rye District.
Moussa Ahmed, Student Representative.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent of School Community Engagement.
Officer Escarell, Almaron County Police Department.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our Moment of Silence, and I want to mention Jose Norberto Lopez Ho Hoa, who is the night custodian at Burley Middle School, who recently passed. Next, we have Approval of the Agenda. Do we...I have a motion.
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Chuck Pace. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right. Agenda moves. Next, we have Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Graham Page. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right. Consent Agenda is moved. Next, we have Announcements. First, we're going to start with our new student representative to the school board, Mr. Moussa Ahmed from Monticello High School.
Thank you. Hey, everyone. I'm Moussa Ahmed, and I'm honored to be representing Monticello High School this year. As a senior at Monticello, I've engaged in different activities like running the Muslim Student Association Club and being a part of the Students' Senate. I've developed a strong understanding of the diverse perspectives and concerns within our student body. My main goals are to ensure that every student's voice is heard, to foster an inclusive environment, and to work collaboratively with both students and the board to address any issues that arise. I believe that with open communication and proactive approach, we can achieve this goal. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve and make a positive impact on our school community. Together, we can make a difference and make learning for all a reality. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Moussa. Welcome to you. Also, I just wanted to note that this year, we're doing a slight change to our student representative program. So, we have a stu...we have four student representatives. Actually, Moussa's our first one to serve today. And then, so we'll be seeing other student representatives at various meetings throughout the year. So, thank you so much. Next, we have our Spotlight on Education, and I believe...is Dr. Dunn? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and staff. I'm really excited to introduce tonight's spotlight because you can already kind of completely identify our Space Camp group. And so, I'm actually kind of introducing them as a group, and primarily Katina Dudley, she's the lead science coach. She's going to come up with them and kind of help them explain and guide them through that process. Quickly, just honoring Northrop Grumman for the incredible generosity that they showed us by giving the grant that paid for this program. So, it really wouldn't have been possible without that. And, I mean, this opened up an opportunity that our students just wouldn't have had and our employees just wouldn't have had otherwise. So, I think that's so wonderful. And so, this was Space Camp in Alabama, and like I said, they're going to tell you a little bit more about this momentarily. Four teachers and 21 students attended the Space Camp from July 6th to 12th. And it's a really exciting six-day overnight occasion. You know, it's a camp in Huntsville, Alabama, where students get to experience the future of space travel, trained to solve these really kind of exciting, technologically challenging, interesting engineering, all the different kinds of STEM things that go into Space Camp. They get to engage with that hands-on. So, communication is a part of it, everything you can imagine. So, Ms. Dudley's going to come up with the group, and y'all come on up when you're ready. And, look, this is like, we don't usually get this much visual with our spotlight, so I think it's so great. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I said tonight was an exciting opportunity. I'd be here and share with you all. So, this is our crew. On July 6th, believe it or not, they all met at the airport. They arrived before 4:00. We were supposed to meet there at 4:00 a.m. They arrived before 4:00 a.m. And Northrop Grumman provided a criteria for what teachers were to do as they selected students to participate. And our teachers added two other criteria. Can you stay away from home for six nights and seven days without your families? And are you going to get on that plane? Because many of our students haven't flown before. And I started getting calls at 3:45, "The students are already here. Come." So, I live...I can walk to the airport. Anyway, I arrive. The kids were very excited to board, and the families were very nervous for their students to board. But here's what you're going to hear a little bit about tonight that I think is really exciting. When the students came back and the teachers, they talked about simulated space missions, teamwork exercises, and STEM activities that bring the wonders of space exploration to life. And they also talked about how we have this idea of what space is like and what space training's like, and they actually got to see current space training and current space simulations. So, I just want to recognize a couple of things. Northrop Grumman called us in December, and a lot of teachers have already planned their summers at that point. So, we needed five teachers, and we had 24 seats. And we filled 24...we filled all four of our teacher seats, and we filled all but one of our student seats. That was really very exciting at such a last-minute time. And the other thing that I think you're going to hear a little bit about that's really great, that the teachers didn't know about until after they had all agreed, is when you arrive at Space Camp, the students go this way, and the teachers go this way, and they don't really run into each other until graduation. Maybe they crossed each other's paths at some point, but we have a couple of students here. I'm going to introduce our team. So, we had four teachers, Jessica Miller, Karen Ackerman, Melissa Thaxton, Julia Weed, and then some of their students that are here tonight, Peyton Henshaw, Axel Sanchez-Perez, Ishmael Abdullah, Dara Adakunle, Elliot Lopez, Shangrela Ma Rogan, and Neela Far Farhang. And Ms. Weed's going to talk to you a little bit about what's in the slides, but Peyton Henshaw and Elliot Lopez have prepared a few words about their experience. Peyton, how's that? And they've all got space suits as part of this term.
That's awesome.
Oh, that's cool.
Good evening. My name is Peyton Henshaw, and I am a 7th grade. I am in the 7th grade at Henley. I am an also...eh...I am also a proud Space Camp alumna. This summer, I was awarded one of Alabama country's student scholarships from Northrop Grumman to attend Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama. Tonight, I will be sharing some of my experiences with you. At Space Camp, we were ki...eh...there were kids from all over the world. We went to presentations. We did team-building activities like making and launching a rocket and completed simulated missions, most successful, and ate meals together. We did simulators like the Multi-Access Trainer and the 1/6th Gravity Chair. We visited museums and saw giant rockets, played at the theme park, and got Kona Ice. I'm grateful to Northrop Grumman and the U.S. Space and Rocket Center for wanting children to attend their Space Camps. They know...they know we are the next generation of space scientists. They gave us the experience of a lifetime. I know I will never forget the week of fun and learning at camp. This concludes my Space Camp speech thing.
What I have to say is that I had a great experience at Space Camp. My favorite part was being pilot because I want to be a naval aviator when I grow up. I also liked staying there for the week and seeing...making new friends. Thank you for your time.
And I'm going to speak a little to the teacher experience. As Katina said, we got to move and go do our own thing, and it was really Camp for Adults. It was great. And by the way, there is Camp for Adults. In case any of you are fired up to do this, you can go. There's also an educator camp that is geared a little bit towards...more towards educators. So, some of the things that we got to do, this is a view of doing the missions. These are real trainers that they...that they have used for astronauts. Do you all see the slides? Are they on here? Okay. This is our teacher group. The Northrop Grumman brought people together from six countries, U.S., four or five places in the U.S...oh, more than six probably. No, six. England, Poland, South Korea, and Australia. And those kids were also mixed in with our kids. Our kids have friends now from all over the world, and that's...that by itself is a really special experience. We got to...I'm just guessing. This is the student one where it has a lot of information, but I'll skip through. This is the 4:00 in the morning airport. This is much...these are some of the things that we did. Bouncing around the 1/6th Gravity simulation, very difficult for me. Building rockets, that was a really interesting one, frankly. The teachers from South Korea said, "Do you get to have gunpowder in your classrooms for this?" And we're like, "Yeah, in the United States we do," with some rules. But we did the rocketry. We did roles. So, the space missions involve the roles, the ground control, and then the various missions. And the various missions were very based on science. So, we never lost sight of the science aspect of this. That machine is a beast, by the way. So, these are some other pictures. We met astronauts. Woody Spring is a shuttle astronaut, and we got the teacher diplomas from Charlie Duke, who was an Apollo astronaut. That's pretty cool. So, here's some other pictures. Basically, one of the goals of Space Camp is to really get people excited about the mission of NASA and the space exploration, and it's a really, really neat time to have been able to go because the Artemis missions going back to the moon are just beginning, and the manned missions are coming up very soon. So, it's a really fantastic time to be in this, for our kids to see it, because we haven't had that many manned missions except to the space station. And as they grow, they are going to grow into these possibilities. And a lot of Space Camp alum go on to become people who work for NASA. And they also did a really wonderful job of showing that NASA is not just about rocket scientists and astronauts. There's artists involved. There's food people involved. There's communicators involved. There's lawyers involved. There's weathermen. And there's just a wide range of opportunity available with NASA. So, it was really neat to see that variety and for our kids to have such a great exposure to it as well as ourselves. So, we came back fired up to do some labs. We have at Burley, we're going to do the one where you make a really thin heat shield, like the heat shield tiles on the Challenger, and then you put it in front of a blowtorch, and you put an egg behind it, and you see if the egg will explode after three minutes of full-on blowtorch. And none of ours did, so we were pretty successful with our heat shield. So, that's...we're excited to do that. That's it? We're good? Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Oh, yeah. Are there any questions or comments?
Actually, yeah. Can we go back to the slide that had the countries and the states on it? I'm curious, is this something that we...it's not something we can do annually, right?
We're hoping to get another call from Northrop Grumman. We have...Northrop Grumman has done this before. This is the largest group that they've sent to Space Camp from Almar County. We don't know, but we're really hoping that they'll call back. And these teachers did a presentation to all of our middle and high school science teachers, and we have a lot of people excited to say yes if we do get this underway.
That's great.
These are all places where Northrop Grumman has locations.
Right. It makes sense. It does make sense. I mean, they're right...yeah, they're right here.
I have a question for the students. Did this make any of you want to go into science or engineering or become an astronaut? Like, did it open up several...yeah?
It made me want to, plus, only because of what happens when you're in space.
Space is terrifying, right?
It is. If you go up there, one, you have to get all your vaccinations back because all the vaccinations go away. So, once you're back, you're like...
Really?
Oh, really?
I had no idea.
When you go up there, you grow, and then once you come back, you have back pain because you went back to the same height.
Oh, my goodness. That's...maybe I need to go to adult camp. That's fascinating.
I know. Wow.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Okay. With the teachers, how many other experiments do you think you would be bringing back that we could use in our classrooms from this experience?
They purposely make sure that every experiment that we did there is something that's replicable in our classrooms, as well as showing us lots of other opportunities for partnership. For example, there's a high-altitude weather balloon that they're currently taking applications for student ideas. What kind of experiments should we do on these? What sort of things should we be doing on the space station? So, lots of opportunities, both to do labs in class and also kind of guide what we think, what should the astronauts be doing up in space.
I will add, I'm just starting a robotics club at Henley because of robotics, like the rover missions. So, I think it's very inspiring.
Great.
I just wanted to really thank our pioneers for going out and taking on this project. I really want to thank Ms. Dudley for your quick action to make this happen and getting people on board. You have so many partners in the community, and you're able to make great things happen for our kids. And I want to thank the teachers because I know it was a cool experience, but great educators, in my mind, make themselves vulnerable and open themselves up to new experiences because that's what we want our young people to do and for their parents to do. And I just really think you typified that. You already do. I know all of you as teachers, and that's what you do every day. But by attending this camp and experiencing the same thing the students were, you really were a source of inspiration for them. And students, you're just courageous to take this on, and I hope that inspires you to get into STEM, and whether you want to be on a rocket or you want to support one. And I don't know what the ratio is, but I assume it takes hundreds of people, thousands, to support a rocket launch and to make it successful. So, thank you to all of you.
Nobody was scared to ride the plane home after that. That's awesome. Can I share one more thing because I thought someone here might share it? I was reading some papers when they returned from Space Camp, and one of my favorite papers that I read was about their space mission because they all had a role, and they all had to, like, do their role well so that they could have a successful mission. Am I saying this right? And I just thought, you know, you get in there, and you're so curious about what everyone else is doing, but you can even see in the pictures that they're focused on their task because they know that that is something that they have to follow through with for this whole mission to work. And so, I really loved reading about that from one of the students that sent me that in the paper. So, anyway, I hope I said that well. If you have anything to add before we sit down, feel free. Anybody else want to add anything? You had your hand raised at one point. Do you want to share anything? Are you good? Yes. You good? All right. Thank you, guys, for letting us be presented tonight. This is great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. I know. I feel jealous. I'm very jealous of that. Next, we have our School Board and Superintendent Business. I do have one item. I am nominating Katie Walker to be the Rivanna District Representative on the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee. So, I guess I move to nominate Katie Walker.
I second.
All right. Moved by me, seconded by Dr. Acuff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right. Thank you very much.
And then, Ms. Lee, the other piece that we were going back and forth on today, you're going to do that one during Other Business?
Um...
The runaround, the Letters Training?
No, I think that's coming now.
That's going to come with Chandra.
Yeah, Chandra, yeah.
You want to do that now, Dr. Hayes?
That's fine. Good evening, Chair Lee, Vice Chair, Board Members. In light of recent adoption...the recent adoption of HMH literacy curriculum and the new mandates associated with the Virginia Literacy Act, our teachers have completed professional learning on the HMH curriculum and will soon start professional learning through Letters, a program based in the science of reading. You will hear more about this tonight and as we outline our plan and our timeline in our presentation later this evening. Moving forward, our elementary teachers will also be required to participate in professional development around the new elementary math curriculum, which our division will adopt in the spring and implement during the 2025-2026 academic year. Given the scope of these changes, we have been exploring ways to mitigate the potential stress placed on our elementary educators. While we cannot modify the Virginia Department of Education deadlines and mandates, we propose amending the completion deadline for the culturally responsive teaching micro credential or certification. We fully recognize the importance of culturally responsive teaching and its significant impact on our students. Therefore, while maintaining the program and its accountability measures, we seek to offer greater flexibility in the timeline for completion. This adjustment will support our staff in managing current demands and allow us to better plan for supporting educators in obtaining their micro-credential certification beyond 2026. Our policy does not detail a plan for how we will continue to implement a culturally responsive educator program in ACPS beyond 2026. In addition, amending this policy will enable us to alter the language around the culturally responsive teaching program to reflect the evolving needs of our division. For example, many of our recent college graduates have completed coursework in cultural competency, and we want to ensure that our CRT programming accommodates both those who have completed coursework as well as those who have not had this exposure or opportunity to become culturally responsive educators. With the board's approval, I respectfully propose extending the completion deadline and updating the policy to better align with our division's current and future needs. Thank you for your consideration.
So, I just wanted to have...for us to have a conversation around...what I see are two things, right? So, one is in order to accommodate the HMH and Letters training to give some flexibility around the CRT training requirement for elementary school teachers who are in that training or in the HMH. And then, the second part of it, to me, is whether that requirement, that's very specific requirement, would be in board policy or if it would be in operational policy.
That's correct.
So, to me, those are two things, and I just wanted to get the board's feedback on it because next steps would be, we would see a new policy at the...for information at our next meeting, and then we wouldn't vote on it until even the next meeting. But I just want to get a sense of where people stand on both of those issues. So, we can start with the relaxed CRT, just some flexibility around CRT for...specifically just for those teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
So...thoughts?
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. We are hearing from just a number of teachers who have a lot on their plate and are really taking everything seriously and just want a little bit of flexibility. So, it's hard. They're all very important things, but I think because we are...we are not able to change what the Department of Ed told us, we have to follow that, and so we're going to have to give flexibility on the latter.
I guess I have a question, Dr. Hayes. I mean, as a practical matter, what do we have? 600 elementary school teachers, all of whom have to do this. Most of them have already completed their CRT. So, how much of a actual...how much is that flexibility? I mean, we require all new teachers to complete it within three years. We have, what, 30 new teachers a year? No, I guess we have 175 this year-ish. I'm just questioning how much actual flexibility that's going to translate to. I mean, it will be a little, but is that really going to alleviate the burden very...very much?
So, currently, we have about 550 elementary teachers that have completed the book study, which is the foundation for being able to move into micro-credential or full certification. And about 167 of those completers...of those completers can start the micro-credential, but about 275 have not started anything. So, have not started. So, there is quite a few teachers that would benefit from having additional time because even if they've already done the book study portion, there's still an additional portion that they have to do. And with the...with the training with Letters, the initial plan that we had in place for our staff was to help accommodate some of that workload within the school day and year with professional development time. But then, in August, the VDOE made an update that said we now have to do, for those that are going through Letters Training, Letters 1, they now have to do an additional capstone course. And that could be done at any time, but that's additional hours that we had not accounted for when we created our PD plan. And so, while, you know, we don't want to lose the importance of CRT at all, we just know that this, on top of having to go through a math adoption and providing professional development for that, will be additional hours as well.
So, we would be probably pushing completion of CRT, the next step for CRT, at least two years.
Like, a year. Well, because right now, it's the end of 2026, so we're thinking at least the end of '26, '27.
Okay.
How many extra hours do you think?
For the capstone? I'm not exactly sure.
Just approximate.
Maybe 14-ish.
It's estimated 14 to 21 hours is what the last number that I saw.
14 to 21 hours for the capstone portion.
Is there any way that we could have, like, summer training for...we probably already do, but for our own requirements with CRT?
There's opportunities for certain portions of it, you know, but the goal is really to put the processes in place and the practice with students in the classroom. So, some parts they could do, you know, starting the book study, doing some work groups with other staff members, but the actual implementation pieces, we would prefer our staff to do with students in the building.
You know, we can have a lab school in the summer. I mean, I ran a couple of them in the past that could do that, but...
And that's definitely a possibility. One of the other pieces is really thinking about programming because, as I mentioned, a lot of our newer teacher...younger teachers are coming out of college, or not younger, but our newer teachers are coming out of college, and they are taking courses in cultural competency. And so, the way the program was designed may not necessarily meet the needs of our staff now and moving forward.
So, it sounds to me like we have a pretty strong majority, if not unanimity, around adding that flexibility. So, this...my second question is whether school board policy should dictate the deadlines or if that should become operationalized? And so, if people have thoughts on that?
I really think that deadlines like that shouldn't be in policy. To me, that's an operational decision. I mean, I understand why because it is an important piece that the school board wants, but it does tie the hands of administrators when we have situations like this where we get requirements from the DOE. So, my preference would be to keep those types of dates out of our policy.
So, I generally am a fan of not having operational stuff in governance policies. However, because it's CRT, I feel like anything we...any change we make to that program should be made in a public setting, just because I don't...I don't want it to be thought of, oh, we don't think this is important anymore, so we're pushing it off. I think that a change to this... I think that a change to this needs to be done in public, and I would keep this particular one in here for a while, another couple of years.
I guess I would ask if there's any budget implications to extending deadlines or things like that that would come under board questioning? And if there's not, then it seems like it would be an operational thing, but I don't know the answer to that.
For the CRT, I mean, possibly. If, you know, if we think about, you know, reevaluating the program as it operates, we do purchase books for our staff to use in the book study. So things like that could change as we reimagine how the program can look to meet our needs. But in terms of larger numbers, I don't see where there's a large impact in the budget.
I tend to agree with Ms. Osborne's view. I mean, CRT was sort of an integral part of our anti-racism policy. And to, I mean, I can go along with increased flexibility in terms of both the content of it and the timing of it, but I think we should still keep it on our roadmap.
And if at some point we realize that it doesn't meet our needs anymore, we can come back and take it out of the policy then. So just because it stays in it for now doesn't mean it's in it forever, but I do think a change should be very public.
I tend to believe that it's really pretty operational. I think that our job on the governance board is outcomes, setting outcomes, and this, and operations does the inputs to determine what the outcomes are. And I think at the time that this policy was put into place, it probably seemed like having everyone trained in CRT was an outcome at that time. But to me, it really feels like an input now. To me, it really feels like our outcome is making sure that we have, we close our opportunity gaps. And of course, you know, this, the HMH and letters training is, we're both coming at the same goal. And I don't think anyone, obviously no one is disagreeing with this flexibility, but to me, it really feels like things change, situations change. As Dr. Hayes said, we have a lot more teachers, newer teachers coming in with cultural competency. Not that we would get rid of CRT, like, it's very important to me, but it, to me, it just feels like these are inputs and that's not our job. I'll also say that I do want a much deeper dive for us into what our equity work looks like. And I would like a work session on that because I will also say that even though we've had these deadlines, we have schools with a very high rate of diversity, where you would want the CRT especially, and they have some of the lowest percentages of CRT. So I don't know that necessarily it having been in policy meant that much to that. I really want to discuss that in our work session that I would like for us to have. So I, to me, it's pretty strictly an operational thing. So I mean, we can take a vote tonight on where to direct staff in working on this policy that we will see in two weeks. So I'll open the floor for a motion for that.
And what I would say, Ms. Lee, is that that would be appreciated by staff because then instead of just bringing back a red line and then like putting it on the consent agenda, it would be better to know like what the direction of the board is before we bring back a product.
Okay, so I'll open the floor for a motion?
So I'm just going to get things started by moving that we make one change, and that would be within the first three years of employment or by 2028 for teachers and leave the rest as it is for now.
Could you repeat that again?
Where it says 2026 in the policy, move it to 2028.
I will second that motion, but also in a nod to Chair Lee, agree that perhaps looking at all of our policies and trying to determine what we should be looking at. But I don't think we need to confuse the two today.
It feels like this would fix this current problem right now, I mean, somewhat.
But if VDOE then has other requirements of us, then I guess we can come back and vote on it. Again, it seems to me to be a little bit, it does not leave the division nimble to the other forces that it has to, it's accountable to.
And I have a clarifying question on that, too. Is it just extending for elementary school or are we extending for all teachers?
Right, my understanding was this was simply for anyone who is involved in the HMH and letters training.
That's correct.
Would the date in that motion affect the VDOE policies in any way? Would there be any conflict between that and that motion?
No, sir.
And we're talking about going from 2026 to 2028? Is that what you said?
That was my suggestion, yes.
Yeah. But your motion would not affect CRT training at all, just to make sure that I'm with you on that?
Correct, we're just giving teachers more time to get it done.
So your, your motion is to, is for staff to bring back a policy with those changes? And then we would, we would get that for information next time, and then we would vote on it in October?
Yes.
But the motion needs to be explicit on what, who that extension is for?
Right.
If we operationalize this somewhat, then part of that could be giving the principal the necessary leeway to work with those teachers who may have already completed this training. There's no reason for them to use, to have this issue of this compensation from us of time when they could do the work that they are supposed to do for letters. Is that what we're talking about here? Will our change give that kind of flexibility to principals?
I mean, it would just be exactly what you said, right, Ellen? Just the...
Just give everybody two more years because it's in the policy 2026. I'm only suggesting changing that to 2028 just for now, so we can move on along.
Madam Chair, I do have a possible compromise.
All right.
Which first, I would say that having a date like that in our policies is an extreme anomaly. I was, I was surprised to see that, and especially to see it in the PD policy. So I'll just say that. I mean, I review all the policies, I look at them, but it must have been, but I was just surprised by that. What we can do is, we, many of our policies have regulations attached to them, and they are, they are with the policy. And so like when you, you've noticed over time, you'll read a policy and then it'll have regs that are, you go to that and it's attached to it. It's a public-facing document, and when we bring revisions to the board on a policy, those regs are also looked at for revision as well, so. And what they do is they allow, they do allow us a little more, to your term, to be more nimble because we can do something different than what's in the regs. There is policy that allows me to do that in the absence of policy and then come back to the board and say, hey, we need to make this change because there was an issue. We're going to bring the policy back to you and the regs to look at to make that change. So one possible compromise could be for us to add regs to this policy or add regs to the anti-racism policy and have, and just have the regulation be this information, that, the deadline for us to achieve success with that input of our teachers completing their CRT. So we could bring that back to you, and then that way you're not enacting in policy something which is operational. However, the operational doc would be attached to it and the board will, the public can see it, everybody can see it, and when we bring it back, the board's going to look at that as well.
So that, to me, seems a good compromise.
Yeah, that seems practical.
Yeah.
Okay, so I believe because of Robert's rules, I need to bring a vote on that first motion that was moved and seconded. And then we can have a motion around your suggestion.
Unless we want to withdraw it.
I would like to amend my motion.
Okay.
To...
Is that what you were going to say?
For the details around that to be included in regulations instead of the policy itself.
Does that meet all of the requirements of what you're saying?
Yes, she'll, that's appropriate, but she'll need a new second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Dr. Acuff. The amended motion to add this information into a regulation attached to...
The policy.
I mean, right now it's attached to the PD policy, which I don't think makes sense either.
So what we can do is bring the, bring both the policies back, red line on the next consent agenda, and if, we'll talk with staff. I'd like to see what Chandra, Daphne, or Dr. Hayes and Dr. Kaiser are thinking, as well as the, you know, just run it through CAD and a little bit. But I think having, I, I thought it was in the anti-racism policy, the deadline.
Yeah, okay, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Couldn't we say within a reasonable period of time and not have a hard date on either the regs or the, or the code?
Who's going to define reasonable?
Yeah, I don't want to.
Well, you go to law school to understand what that's about.
Well, is there any further discussion on this motion? Are we ready to vote? All right, Ms. Thompson, could we do a roll call on that?
Yes, I just want to be clear that everyone voting is clear of what the motion is.
I believe that we are voting on a motion to attach a regulation to our anti-racism policy that would detail deadlines for achieving our CRT goals that we put out and that we would also amend, so we would take it out of the PD policy, put it in regs in the anti-racism policy. I believe that's what we're voting on. Does that seem right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Chair Lee. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Mr. Pace?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Dr. Berlitt?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
I feel pleased that we got to that compromise in public, and I think it was a good and robust discussion. So thanks to everyone on the board for that.
So... Do you have something? I have something.
I have more things, I think. But you...
No, go ahead.
So Ms. Schmidt, would you mind, please, providing an verbal enrollment update for us, please?
Sure. Good evening, I'd like to provide a brief enrollment update. At the October business meeting, we will provide a more formal update. At that time, we'll present our September 30th enrollment. That's a key date because that's the date we submit to the state. This will include details by each school. But in the meantime, I know you're curious. So I can share that as of today, we have about three hundred more students, K-5 students, or K-12 students more. Let me start over. As of today, we have three hundred more K-12 students enrolled as compared to last year. We had projected growth, but that has exceeded our projections by more than a hundred students. So in response, we've worked closely with schools who've had more students than anticipated and provided additional staffing where necessary. Again, more details at the next business meeting, so if there's anything specific you would like us to cover in that presentation, please let us know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. And if you would indulge me, I do, I just want to share that I did visit Croze Elementary School on Monday, and it was a great visit with Stacy England, who's the principal. And I was there for about an hour, and I really saw some genuinely inspiring teaching and learning. Our first stop was Jenna Hall's fourth grade class, where students were deeply engaged in reading The Year of the Rat. Using HMH materials and a Promethean board, they followed along with the story, answered comprehensive questions, and seamlessly transitioned to a seesaw activity for sentence dictation. During this transition, Ms. Hall took time to check in with individual students, and we had a chance to chat with one of the students about her weekend Pokemon tournament, showcasing really what I thought was an amazing thoughtful relationship that Ms. Hall is building in her classroom. We also visited Gary Grassi's fourth grade class, and he was, the students were doing something he called a working snack. And I was impressed with the snacks, by the way. Students were focused on mastering long and short vowel sounds, but what stood out was Mr. Grassi's creative approach to helping students express their feelings at the outset of class. So he had, he had a magnetic whiteboard. Each student had a name, had their name on a placard, and they could slide it into what zone of regulation that where they were at that time, red, blue, yellow, or green. And he pointed out to me, because I was like, well, that'd be great if everybody was in green, but he said, no, you want them to put where they are because that's where they are. And that's, I thought that was a great way for him to work with the class. And then the final stop was Hope Kaplan's fifth grade art class, and the students were working on color wheels, and they were designing personal cubes that represent their identities. And if you visit Croze sometime in the near future, they're making a large mural for every child's cube in the school. So hundreds of students, and they're combining them all together into one mural. And overall, just the visit was great, the school looked great, it was very well maintained. I want to salute the custodial staff and our cafeteria staff. Every, every area of the building was really well managed, and I want to thank the staff for having me for a visit, so thank you.
Okay, I have two things. One, I've had a lot of questions on lockers in our secondary schools, and Dr. Haas, I appreciated your update yesterday with the list of locker availability. I think it came as a shock, one, I'm a mom of kids in the schools and have always been told that lockers were not available, especially in the Western feeder pattern. Turns out that they are available upon request. And so I would just ask that this information be shared, widespread, because there is a lot, when I posted it yesterday on my page, and I got a lot of feedback that they were told from the school that there weren't lockers available or that they had been told for years that there were no lockers. And all the other, you know, in the Western feeder pattern, especially Henley and Western, but Henley, it says that it's available upon request, and all the other middle schools, they are assigned for sixth grade. So there seems to be some inconsistency with that. So I would just like to make sure that that information is made available to all families and also that the consistency with the administrations in the schools, that they're getting the right information out to the families. I think our students and parents would really appreciate that. Thank you. The other thing, I wanted to just bring up, I guess, go on the record with my frustration on the community and schools. I apologize that it's two months after this was brought up. I had COVID at last month's meeting, or I would have brought it up then, and I didn't attend the meeting. But I was frustrated, I would say, that it was not brought up during the budgeting process when we are going to be spending a significant amount of money over the next three years. And I understand, after talking with Dr. Haas, that it's not something we would vote on because it's money that had already been appropriated, some COVID relief funds. But those funds were never discussed during the budgeting process, when we were talking about making cuts and looking at how we were going to appropriate funds throughout the school division. So I found that pretty frustrating. But I also am curious as to, you know, you provided a list of how we were going to fund it over the next three years in combination with the organization and grants, but after, in the fourth year, ACPS will be responsible for this program. And, you know, we've talked about Apple Memorial Education Foundation providing funding for that, but that's not guaranteed either. And so I feel like we need a lot more information on what the plan is for this very large program that seems wonderful, truly, I am really excited about it. But from a budgetary standpoint and from a board standpoint, I'm frustrated that it was kind of brought up to us after the budget was finalized and pushed through. Also, I would like to say that there seems to be a lot of overlap with the Office of Community Engagement and with a department that we are already spending a lot of money on that is really important to our division. So I would like to ask for a report on where the overlap is between community and schools and the Office of Community Engagement, how they will work together, where there is some overlap that may not be necessary, and how we could better utilize a department... where there is some overlap that may not be necessary, and how we could better utilize a department that we're already have, that I, I feel is extremely important to our division. And if community and schools is going to be serving a lot of those roles, then how can we better utilize that department to make sure that we're meeting all of our student needs? So I just wanted to get that out there and ask for that report going forward.
Ms. Spillman, thank you for your comments and would be happy to provide further information for you. I want to assure you that communities and schools model is in direct response to some of our challenges around social issues that our administrators have voiced, that they would like more support around those issues. So I'm happy to provide you additional support around the information for how this connects to the work that we do in the Office of Community Engagement.
Great.
And I thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you for that. And I do, I think it, it sounds absolutely wonderful. I am very much excited about the program. I just would like more information to make sure that we have all the information we need to make decisions in the upcoming years and going into budgeting season right after the holidays again. I think it's really important to have all that information.
And I, and I thank Dr. Kaiser and I just want to say that we did send the board on July 12th a detailed report that included all the costs of the program and how they will be managed. It only goes out to year three because that's all we felt comfortable projecting. It's not the plan for the school system to take over all the expenses of the program. So I apologize for not going out beyond year three, but that, that's pretty much the best we could do. When we do come across programs that can meet a need, we, what we do is we use one-time money for it. And then what we do is, and we've done this with other things in the past, and then bring it back to the board during the budget season, because we're going to bring, build it into recurring funding. And so then the board, we would have to do, we would make a logic model for it. It will come in during the budget process and then the board will decide as to whether they want to continue to do it. I would look at it as perhaps a pilot program, like we did with the SEL coaches, we did those for three years, we did it with one-time money. It was very expensive and it did meet a need in the schools, meet a need in the schools. And then the board did decide to go ahead and adopt it into the operating budget. I don't foresee this, but I do think that as we make progress with it, not only will the board want to continue it and continue, what we're paying is about 25% of the cost right now, that the board will not only want to do that, but expand it perhaps to other schools because of the success that we're getting from it. So I do appreciate you bringing it up and I will resend the report that I sent on July 12th to the board that talked about all those pieces that I just mentioned. Thank you.
What happened to the book study we were doing? I participated in like the first one and then I got busy and I couldn't follow up.
Apparently the book study continued and so I don't know if there'll be another book study, but if you would like to do one, we can certainly.
Yeah, because that was, it was helpful to read about it, too.
I think so, yeah. And we can provide some more background on that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all of the superintendent and board business? I know we have some other business at the end. But next we will, if there is no other announcement from board members, superintendent, we'll move to, we don't have any public comment either tonight, so we will move to school division business. Up first, we have more about the pre-K-12 literacy instructional and implementation alignment with Dr. Hayes.
Good evening again, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Acuff, and members of the board. As you all know, Dr. Hayes, and I'm here tonight with members of the Department of Instruction and Professional Development. With me is Ms. Michelle Kastner, the Executive Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Karen Heathcock, the Curriculum Coordinator for Elementary ELA, and Ms. Megan Wood, Director of Professional Learning. Tonight, we'll be providing you all with updates around the three topics you see on the screen, how we are working through ACPS's vision for literacy and our pre-K through 12 literacy documents, how we are leveraging high-quality instructional materials through our adoption of HMH and implementation, how that's going so far, and some evidence supporting, evidence-based literacy instruction and decision-making through the letters training. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Michelle Kastner.
Thank you, Dr. Hayes, and good evening Chair Lee and Vice Chair Acuff. First, I sincerely want to express my deep gratitude to every single elementary teacher and principal and vice principal in all 15 schools for the heavy lift of actually getting HMH started. We know it was a huge lift, but Karen and I have been in all 15 schools and been in all classrooms and it's really incredible to see. You would think that they had been teaching it for years. So they're making it look very seamless and I know all the work that has gone on behind the scenes, so I just want to express that publicly. So I'm pleased to provide an update regarding the Virginia Literacy Act requirements. And the first requirement stated that every K-5 student will receive core instruction grounded in science-based reading and research, and we are doing that in Almar County. The second requirement is that every K- through teacher will assess student learning using approved literacy screeners, and we are doing that in Almar County. And every family will have access to online resources to support literacy development, and we'll go into that a little bit further later. And then every division will develop a literacy plan and also staff reading specialists to support intervention. And we are just in the beginning process of providing professional learning to support our teachers. So I will hand it over to Karen Heathcock, who's been an incredible leader during this whole process.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. I was here in the spring and we shared a comprehensive literacy document with you that we have in all of our schools and online. Based on feedback that we received from that, we realized that we needed a pared-down, more accessible version that was friendly for families. And so we do have, I worked with Lauren Hunt and others to get a two-pager for K-5 and also a preschool document that is really accessible to families in terms of what is the Literacy Act, how is instruction changing, and what supports are available for families to help with supporting their students' literacy at home. So those are online, they're in schools, and we have enough copies in English and Spanish to go home through literacy nights or back-to-school night, however the schools choose to, to do that. We also are really trying to make sure, and this is included in the, the two-pager. There is in HMH a lot of family support built into that program. Every grade level has family letters in 11 languages, based on what the structured literacy pathway and the knowledge-building piece is, and some ideas for parents to support that learning at home. We have requested from HMH three more languages and we're talking, they are looking into seeing whether they can translate it or whether we need to have that translated ourselves. There's also a feature called HMH Family Room, that if parents actually access their student's account from home through ClassLink, there's a family room which has lots of tips and videos and then parents can see what assignments have been given, a copy of the student my book, so they can read passages at home that the students are working with at school. So it really will, if there are assessments done online, parents can get in to see the results of those assessments in real time. So that feature, we'll be working with families. We are in day 13 of the seven-year, so we're just making sure that, like, as teachers kind of acclimate, we're introducing new pieces of it for them to, to share with parents. And then, of course, we have the VLP, the Virginia Literacy Partnerships has worked a ton this summer on really updating a lot of support for the vowels. So when parents get vowels reports home and they have instructional indicators on there, they can go to our website or to the Virginia Literacy Partnerships website and they can actually access things that they can be doing at home to support any sub-test where it showed that that student could benefit from additional support. So two of the prongs that, that are involved in ensuring that we're following through on our commitment to providing high-quality literacy instruction for all students is that implementation of high-quality literacy materials, which obviously is the HMH Into Reading, and then the professional learning for teachers to be making really evidence-based instructional decisions as, as they're working with students. So I am going to focus right now in on the HQIM or the HMH and what we're doing to kind of try and wrap around teachers to provide as much support as we can with that. So obviously, last spring, we had HMH coaches here who did a three-hour kind of getting started. It was just like dipping toe in the water of what HMH is and all that it offers. Obviously, one of the strengths of HMH is there is a lot of material that comes with it. When we're first learning the program, that's not necessarily a strength. I think teachers are seeing that as overwhelming, and it is. And, and that's why we're really trying to reassure, you know, let's get good at the core stuff and then we'll start bringing additional components in. So over the summer, we did do some PD sessions, some were open work sessions that are all optional, so teachers came in and we worked together to plan for what would it look like to plan for a week of instruction and what assessments are we looking at and what do students need to know and what are the learning objectives? So we had a good turnout for those, those sessions. We also had Dr. Conradi back and she did sessions over a couple of days on scaffolding complex text and managing flexible skills group, which is what feedback we had from teachers is what they were most interested in focusing on over the summer. So those were well attended as well. New Teacher Academy, we wanted to make sure that our brand-new teachers to the division had the same opportunities to get those getting started sessions, so HMH coaches came back, did that during NTA, so that all of our teachers were on kind of equal footing as we went into pre-service week and did grade-level three-hour sessions on just honing in on the very first week of instruction and what it looked like to plan for that. The beauty of HMH is it's very, very cyclical. So once teachers are already saying to me like, oh, I know, like, I, I saw it in the first week, here it is again in the second week, now I know how to find it in the third week. So it, the modules really do spiral and are very similar. So once we get good at, at one or two modules, the rest are structured the same. So in order to continue that support over the course of the year, we're having HMH coaches come back three times, once in October, because teachers wanted to kind of get time to get good at the program and so that they're asking for the feedback that they want, that they know that we want to be looking for. So October, February, and April, an HMH coach will come back. We're going to do walkthroughs across all 15 schools over the course of the year, but we're inviting instructional coaches, reading specialists, HMH champions, who are teachers in the school and school administrators. We will walk into classrooms and look at practice and share learning across grade levels and schools. We're going to be doing one day of a learning walk, the next day will be a debrief with the HMH coach, so that we can provide teachers and PLCs with feedback. So the supports that are kind of in action every day are the HMH champions. Those are teachers at each elementary school, one teacher per school. They actually also are the content advisory team that I work with. We meet monthly. I'm in communication almost constantly with HMH champions almost every day, but as a group, the 15 teachers and I meet, and we just talk about what's going well, what are some barriers, what are some things we can be doing centrally to support teachers who are, if we're running into problems, that more than one person is experiencing or several schools are experiencing. Those HMH champions have what we call a Coachly license, so they have access to an HMH coach all through the day and into the evening, so they can either book a half-hour Zoom with an HMH coach, or they can hop on the platform that they've already logged into to teach and just send a chat to an HMH coach. So some of our teachers are working with HMH champions to ask just really specific questions that they can get answers to quickly. Our instructional coaches have that same Coachly license, so they're all working together pretty seamlessly to, to provide support within the schools. The school-based literacy teams are, I think, really exciting because the school administrators, I was just at one of these two days ago, they, they bring together some of the literacy leaders across the school and just talk about what are we seeing, what's going well, how can we share success so that if, you know, 3rd grade's doing something really well, how can we replicate that and make it easier for other grade levels? And they're just really trying to hone in on what is it as, as a school we can be doing to support this rollout. So each school's going to look a little bit different with that, but they're, they're going to just kind of react to conditions in real time. And then obviously, I just talked about the learning walks. I'm going to hand it over to Megan Wood to talk about letters training.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about, about letter training and what that looks like. The Virginia Literacy Act gives districts options for professional learning, and so our district chose to go with letters. And I'll explain why we made that decision in the next slide. But right now, the pathways that teachers have to meet the requirements for the VLA is that teachers that do not have letters training will be able to complete letters this year. And then, as Dr. Hayes mentioned earlier, we found out in August that the VDOE added the requirement of a UVA Canvas course that will be at the end of letters. Teachers who, and we have about 40 teachers in the district that have already completed Letters Volume 1, they have had the option to either choose to complete Letters Volume 2 and then do a Capstone course, or they had the option to do the VLP module. And the majority of the teachers that have already completed Letters 1 have chosen to go with Letters Volume 2 and the Capstone course rather than just the VLP module. And then teachers with UVA or VLP? Uh, VLP. The Virginia Literacy Partnership are creating the state modules. I see. Yeah. And then teachers who have already completed Letters Volume 1 and 2, which we have a handful, like maybe 10, just have to complete this Capstone's course. So these are the requirements. If you chose to do the Letters Pathway, which we did, these are the requirements that teachers, depending on where they are with their training, these are the requirements that are outlined by, by the VDOE. Again, we chose letters for a variety of reasons. These are the, these are the highlighted reasons why. Letters is directly aligned with the HMH Into Reading curriculum. So when you think about that slide that Ms. Heathcock just showed with the, the high-quality instructional materials and the instructional decision-making, these two align really well. That's most evidenced by the scope and sequence of the structured literacy component into Into Reading. Both HMH and Letters follow that same scope and sequence. So as teachers are learning about science of reading, they're seeing it happen in their classroom. Also, evidence suggests that Letters has shown impact on improved teacher knowledge and practice, and implementation is linked to improved outcomes. It's really important when we're talking about professional learning and the research related to professional learning, that drawing a direct line to student outcomes is really difficult because of the variables that go into play when, when executing the professional learning, but we can draw links into improved knowledge of content and instructional decision-making, and Letters has evidence that, that it does impact both of those with teacher practice. And then additionally, Letters has, our goal is to build a sustainable professional development model around the science of reading in the division. And so Letters has an infrastructure in place that allows us to do a train-the-trainer model that will, that will allow us to continue this professional learning, you know, long after the VLA is expired. And so that's one of the reasons why we went with Letters as well. Additionally, Letters model, modules and structures align to high-quality professional learning, the characteristics of high-quality professional learning, the fact that it's job embedded, it has a component of what they call Bridge to Practice, where there are activities that teachers are given through the units that say, try this with your students. And so because of those Bridge to Practices, that builds in collaboration with grade-level PLCs. That gives teachers an opportunity to talk and see how that's work, that how that's working in the classroom. That also builds in the collaborative component and it's also active. Teachers are engaging with the content in, in the classroom. And then additionally, one benefit to teachers by going with Letters is it provides teachers with a transferable certificate at the successful completion of the program, and it, it has a feature where teachers can seek graduate credit for the completion of Letters. So that's another reason we felt that this was beneficial pathway for our professional learning. This, this slide, I'm not going to read it to you because it has lots of text on it, but after our teachers completed, we had a cohort in the spring go through Letters training so that they could become the facilitators. I asked them for some feedback on what, you know, how their experience was, and you can see even teachers that have had, received a master's in a reading program, they said that they felt that this was more impactful than that learning. All of the teachers that have gone through this program say that it is, while we know it's time-intensive, they have said that it has been beneficial. I think the fact that we have several people that had the option to opt out of joining Letters 2 and take a more truncated learning experience, opted for the Letters 2. So I think that just the evidence that teachers and the anecdotal feedback that we're getting indicates that this is a really impactful and meaningful learning experience. This is also like Karen had a slide about the timeline. I'm just going to take it back to bring you forward a little bit. In the spring, we had 30 teachers go through Letters training with the intent of becoming facilitators. 29 of those teachers committed to becoming facilitators for the district. They started the facilitator training in August. They will finish that in about mid-October for the first in-person Letters training, which happens on October 24th. We just today finished our last kickoff meeting with, with our elementary schools, so everybody has had the kickoff meeting where they has had the kickoff meeting where they've gotten their accounts and gotten logged in. And then, in November, we will start Letters Volume Two for that cohort that has that requirement left to do. And then, in '24, '25, we will provide teachers with the option to enroll in Letters Two. So that's our timeline for that. And then, as you know, because you guys have already talked about this, that time is a factor, and it's a concern for teachers. And I would like, just as Ms. Kastner pointed out, I would like to thank the principals for their support in this, because they have really worked hard to build time into their schedule for teachers to be able to complete this work. So we have allocated 50 hours of professional learning for teachers to complete this work. What that looks like is typically, on Thursday afternoons in elementary schools, there's a faculty meeting, and the principals have dedicated two of those faculty meetings each month for teachers to work on their asynchronous work. In addition to that, four of the division professional learning days will be dedicated to the in-person training. We also are allocating time during making connections for teachers to work on asynchronous work. We're going to have rooms available for teachers to go to to complete this work. We're asking that teachers not spend all day in those rooms, because we know that cramming isn't really an effective method of learning, but we're going to ask them, you know, to attend at least two sessions. We're also going to have sessions that I think teachers are going to want to go to, so they'll have the option to go in and complete asynchronous work there. And so this is how we've allocated the time for Letters training right now. And I think the next slide is questions. Yeah?
I have a quick question, actually. We received an email earlier this week from a teacher who said that they were getting, having to do Letters training outside of contract time. Is that accurate? Is it taking extra time outside of school to complete this, and how are we addressing that?
So one of the things that we know is, and it's interesting, because we did two kickoff sessions, one on the fifth and one on the, one today, and different schools attended, and I had two different Letters consultants in the session. And I said to the teachers, there's this graphic that's going around that, where Letters estimates how much time it takes to complete modules, and they overestimate. And I said it in both sessions, and both of the consultants nodded. And so that graphic, I think, is going around, which is making people nervous about having time, but we are providing, those times on that last slide are the times that we're providing during contract hours for teachers to work on it. They have access to it outside of school hours, so if they choose to log on, they can. But right now, we've built in that-
So it's completely built in, that if they only do it during the professional development time and the time that's allotted to them during the school day, they can still complete it by the time that they need to?
That's what we've estimated based on the feedback from the people that have done it, that they feel like that that is enough time. I did ask people that have been through it. I mean, obviously, we can't guarantee that everybody's going to finish it at the same rate, because people learn at different rates, but we do feel like that that time for Letters is enough time for people to complete it.
And will there be adjustments if you see that it's taking people longer and they're having to do it outside of contract?
Yeah, I think that that's something that we would have to revisit and look at.
Okay.
Are we still in negotiation with VDOE about the deadline for that? I mean, negotiation, like request and not negotiation?
The last email that we got from the VDOE, and you guys fact-check me, but essentially, they said, "Your job is to do your best to make sure that teachers get this completed by the 20, by the end of this school year, and if you can't meet that requirement, then at the end of the year, you can submit for an extension." Because our goal was to present a plan to them and say, "This is how we're trying to meet it," and then talk about potential if we don't meet it, but they want us to go ahead and try to meet it by the end of this year, and then if we don't, then submit a request for an extension.
Okay, the family room sounds like a really good idea, but have there been any problems in some parts of the county in which internet access may not be that good, where being able to gain access to the family room would be a problem?
I have not heard that yet, but this is something we're just rolling out to parents as literacy nights come around and as the module letters go home and the literacy two-pager goes home. So I haven't heard that yet, but I know I'll be working with, the tech department and I are working really closely together, because we've run into a couple little bugs for teachers that we've had to work out. So if that's a problem, it's something that we'll definitely have to address.
Okay.
Because it is, it's a great feature.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Just back to my last question. Could we have some tracking or some sort of data that shows how long it is taking teachers and maybe get an update in a month or something like that, so that we can make sure that we're staying on top of it and not assuming that it's taking a certain amount of time and potentially is taking longer? And I ask this because we have received a lot of emails from very frustrated teachers who like the program but are having to spend a lot of time outside of work to complete this training, and so I just want to make sure that we are conscious of that.
Yeah, Letters is, it is very user-friendly, both for the teachers and for the administrators on the backend. All of the schools have a site, and then when the administrators log in, they can see all of their teachers and they can check their progress throughout. So it'll show, like, Unit One, so-and-so's on Session Two, and it's a dashboard, so it's really easy to check and monitor that. I can see everybody for the division, so we will be checking on that. The one thing that's a little bit tricky about the time component is it'll say how long somebody has spent in that session, but if you leave your window open, it's counting that time. So like, one time, I actually made a joke with Karen. I was like, "Why did it take you five hours to complete Session Four?" And she was like, "Oh, I left it open all Saturday." So like, looking at those times will be hard, so really, we have benchmarks where people should be by the in-person days, so that'll be, like, that'll be the best gauge on if people are staying on pace and how much time. But the principals are-
Have we gotten feedback from teachers specifically on whether or not they agree with-
Yeah, the 30 people that took it in the spring, I got feedback from them about the asynchronous, how much the asynchronous time took, and they felt like it was reasonable. The other thing that we've shared with teachers, which I didn't know, which I kind of wish I had known a long time ago, is when Dr. Conradi came to visit and do a presentation for us in the spring from William &amp; Mary, it says that you can watch videos at 1.5 speed and not lose your comprehension, so we made sure to share that with the teachers, that they can, you know, increase the speed of the video to 1.5, which will also reduce their time. The, I wish I'd known that, because I've been in classes for the last two years watching videos at regular speed. And they also, the consultants also made the suggestion that have the text open while the videos are going, so you're not watching the videos and then reading the text that is pretty much identical to what you're being taught. So to have those open and take notes at the same time, rather than doing reading separate and videos separate, so that can also save some time. But the principals are fully aware of the concerns of time. They're building in time into their schedules. We're building in time, we're going to monitor it and not leave people hanging out.
I'd just love an update, maybe in a month or so, where we're at with that. That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
We can totally do that.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, Graham, Mr. Page and I had similar ideas about the families accessible, you know, how accessible the help materials are. I mean, I know certainly by the time our kids are, you know, middle, halfway through elementary school, they have tablets or computers they can take home, but what do we, do we do, provide anything? I mean, like, computers for families, or they're each left to their own? I'm assuming that's the case.
I think at this point, that's a technology question. I think we're going to have to follow up with that, because, I mean, Karen can't say for sure, like, what's happening as far as broadband. So what we'll do tomorrow in cabinet is, Dr. Diggs, we'll ask for an update from her, and then we'll publish that back to the board, so you can see where we have coverage and where people are able to access it, if that's all right.
I wasn't trying to be unfair to you, and I know the program is, you know, just launching, but it's just a curiosity I have in terms of having access for as many families as we can.
Right, and the students each have their own MyBook. We bought seven years' worth of the student consumables, and all of the reading passages are in there, and the students take those home and they actually keep them.
Okay.
First and second grade has five of those over the course of the year. So as they're done, then those are sent home, so that the students and families can be reading those passages again.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Megan, I guess I have a comment. I still worry about the teachers making sure that we're not overwhelming them. And I've, one of the principals that, one of my school, what the principal of one of my schools was, basically told me that they would have, this would be it. I mean, they would be doing Letters training this year, and that would, that would be the only thing they'd be able to get done. Does that sound about right? I mean, are we basically going to be all-in on this?
Well, as, you know, Megan said, of course, people work at their own pace, but, you know, this is a VDOE mandate, so it's something, you know, what we have to do, but I think that's a part of, while we wanted to provide that flexibility with some of the other things that we could control within the division around, like, you know, CRT, and also just looking at if there are other opportunities within the school year that principals may decide, hey, you know, I see my staff is having some trouble with this particular person, what supports they can provide on a building level. So as we get feedback from individual principals, we can work with them on a plan for those teachers.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I would emphasize, to your point, this is really about supporting teachers, and I think that the goal is not to, you know, create a mountain that someone has to climb and then say, you got to get up that mountain at the same pace as everyone else. So the goal ultimately is to have this in front of students and have them be successful readers by the time they leave third grade.
I can see us cruising along here in a few years, but-
What I was saying was that our goal is to support teachers, so that if they don't finish it by the end of the year, we've got more time, we've got more resources, and this is, this is something that the Virginia Department of Education has gotten in a pattern of doing, is throwing really hard deadlines in front of school systems. You'll remember in the fall, we were presented with a very, really tight deadline to create a plan for All In Virginia, and then when all the superintendents complained about it, then we were told, well, that's not really a deadline, that's a goal. That's just a really great goal, let's go for it. And so this has become a pattern, and that's why we've been pushing back, and I really appreciate board members being part of that and really helping us out as a staff. But we're going to do the best we can. I don't, I guess I just want to send a message from the staff side, from the superintendent's side, that this is about supporting teachers. It's not about creating something onerous, and ultimately, the students will be the beneficiaries of it, as we've really struggled with teaching reading in Amwell County public schools.
Right.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next, we have a break. I think we're six minutes ahead, according to my computer, but according to up here, it's 7:55, so we will be back at 8:05. Thank you very much.[1378.88] Thank you very much. Let's make our way back in.
So you got your snacks?
Yep.
I've lied to you, I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry, I flat lied. Have, up next, we have our sustainability program update and ACES annual report, Mr. John Coles.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Coles. I'm the environmental program manager with Building Services. I'm here with Katina Dudley, the curriculum coordinator for science, and Christine Putnam, I'm an ACES volunteer, or ACES member and dedicated volunteer. She helps with our schoolyard gardens and with our composting program nearly every day she's in one of our schools. And then, like you all said, I'm here to do an overview of our sustainability program and an update on the ACES committee and the annual report. This evening, we'll focus on four areas: sustainability liaisons, composting updates, plans for reusable flatware pilot, the sustainable design of our two new schools, and an overview of the solar PPA, which is approved in our last meeting. Looking at how sustainability kind of fits into our strategic plan, you know, I think, you know, there's an obvious fit within our third kind of goal, which is the equitable and transformative resources. But I've really found that what's good for our planet when we think of sustainability is also really good for our people. And so I think it really fits in with all of our, our goals and our wellness, you know, I think getting rid of, you know, our emissions from fuel-burning equipment has been shown to improve the health of our students. And so I think that really fits into wellness and helps, you know, with our thriving students and all of that. So we have, we developed our focus areas for ACES based off of the county's climate action plan. And there are four areas that the climate action plan breaks down, which are transportation and land use, buildings and renewables, sustainable materials and management, landscapes, natural resources, and agriculture. And then we, we determined pretty early on in the committee that we needed to also focus on tying all of this in with our students and our curriculum, which is also what the county, the county's climate action plan calls for. But we really wanna put a highlight on that. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it on over to Katina Dudley to take a nice little slide.
Good evening again. So in the spring of 2024, we had our first cohort of liaisons in our school buildings. And so we started with 10. These liaisons included teachers, librarians, and safety coaches. And we have plans to expand that for this upcoming school year. I will make a quick note. Currently, this initiative is funded by a grant, but we will need to be thinking about how this is budgeted for as we continue this program in the future. We wanted to take just a minute to highlight three particular projects that came from our liaisons in this current year. Erica Goff is a teacher at Monticello High School, and she spearheaded several sustainability initiatives, including organizing composting and recycling with her environmental club. She also led a campus cleanup with the larger school community. She launched Save the Birds at Monticello High School. If you've ever been to Monticello, you know, they hit those clean windows that are all through the building. So they created window clings to put on the buildings to prevent the bird collisions. And they plan to continue that project again in this upcoming year. She also supported fundraising efforts to plant a butterfly bush in the school garden in order to enhance the pollinator habitats. Demetra Allmiller is a teacher at Broadus Wood Elementary School, and she has been implementing composting and introducing vermicomposting into her classes with integrating the worms into their learning garden. This year, she will introduce aquaponics to our elementary students. This was a grant that she received through Donors Choose, and she will teach her students about the benefits of using the nitrocy, the nitrogen cycle as they grow tilapia and fresh produce. And then she plans to take the produce that they create and develop and donate it to the Orly Spill Food Pantry.
Did you say tilapia?
I did.
Wow.
That's the fish that does the best cycle there, so they'll have tilapia growing. Well, the tilapia will be there in order for the plants to grow and keep the cycle going. We actually have that going on in like three of our schools right now, which is really cool. Calder McClellan at Murray Elementary organized clothing and toy swaps to minimize community waste, and they also implemented Nude Food Fridays to promote zero-waste lunches among their students. And this group actually attended one of our ACES meetings one night to learn about the conversations that we have and just to share a little bit about the work that they're doing at their school. Additionally, McClellan encouraged free-deeasing vehicle idling in the student pickup line to further support our environmental sustainability efforts. Christine Putnam, our volunteer, is gonna step up and talk to you guys a little bit about the composting happening in our buildings.
All right, thank you very much for having us. And I'm gonna talk to you first about composting, which is really exciting. So you can see from this graph how just in the first half of 2024, the composting, the amount of compostable material that was collected exceeded what was collected in all of '22 and '20, the year '22 and '23, which is pretty amazing. So the, there's more composting that's happening, it's happening more not only in the kitchens, but also with the students involved in the student lunchrooms. And so, and what does, why is that important? I mean, one thing, it's teaching the kids about not just throwing everything in the garbage can, but we're also collecting that food waste, and that has an impact on our greenhouse gas emissions, because all that food is gonna generate methane gas in the landfills. And so I've been spending a lot of time just lately in a couple schools. One is at Mountain View, and I'm just really excited. I wanna give a shout out to fourth grade teacher, teacher Mary Morales, and Chelsea Lundgren. And they, after, this is year three, and they went through a few struggles, but now they have every single student K through five is composting in the lunchroom. And they've got composting monitors, so there's opportunity for student leadership. And they did a big rollout with a lot of education, helping the kids understand why they're doing it. So they've done a great job. And also at Walton Middle School, Heather Keppel, who has helped to spearhead that, and grades five, six through eight are all composting. They started last year, and they just started from the very first day of school, and they're doing a great job. And so, as part of that, I just wanna show you, since I've been spending a lot of time at Mountain View, helping the kids sort through their trash, because you can see there's a lot of plastic, and there's a lot of packaged food that comes with their school lunches. So when they come to sort their food, they've gotta go through all this and make some decisions and dump their food out. But there's a lot. So these two items right here, right? Think about it, most kids have breakfast at school and then they have lunch, so they're throwing in the garbage can at least two or three sets of utensils every single day, every single child. So that really adds up. So this reusable flatware pilot program, the students at Murray Elementary School are really excited about doing this. You heard from them last year, and hopefully this can get off the ground. It will cost, there'll be some initial cost to bind the flatware, and it has to be washed, so that'll be some, it'll take some labor to do that. But I think it's well worth it, and I hope that we can see that through. And I just wanna talk a little bit about lighting, because tonight, you heard from students who were inspired by Space Camp, which is pretty cool. I watched them come in in their uniforms. But sadly, light pollution is increasing the night's brightness by just under 10% per year, which is pretty dramatic. Not only does this impact our ability to see the stars and connect with the universe, but there's a growing understanding of the negative impact of light pollution on the natural world and human health. But we can really make improvements, and it's not that hard. It's by looking at our outdoor lighting systems, and not only if we can reduce the amount of lighting that we're putting out there, will it have an impact on our dark skies, but also energy use, which has a climate impact. So first, no light should be left on, there shouldn't be any light, outdoor lighting on during the day. And so there are systems that can help us with that by converting the lighting systems from photocells to building automated systems. The photocells tend to go out, so I don't know how many of you have gone to a school campus and see the lights on during the day. It's pretty prevalent. So I think that change would go a long way. And also, just making sure that as we have, build new buildings and put in new lighting systems, that they're dark sky compliant, which means the lights are all fully shielded, pointed downwards, and that the light itself is gonna be low color, on the amber end, and so that it's not that blue light. But, so, those are a couple of things that we've been doing. So I think that's the end of my talk. Thank you.
So next, we'll discuss the sustainable design of our two new schools, Mountain View Upper and the Center Two. Both of the schools have a lot of similar features. Both will feature a geothermal heating and cooling system, which saves a dramatic amount of energy compared to traditional heating and cooling, and it's all powered by electricity, which means we can offset it with solar. These buildings additionally have been designed to maximize the rooftop space available for solar. Both will have native landscaping, stormwater by retention basins, daylighting maximization, and all of those sorts of things. And they both will be designed to be lead-silver or better. Finally, I wanted to talk about the power purchase agreement that we are working on and hoping to make headway on. The power purchase agreement works by, a developer installs their solar on our roofs, we lease the roof space to them, and they do it at no upfront cost to us. ACPS then agrees to purchase that energy from the solar developer at a set rate, which is generally more competitive than the grid purchase energy, and cleaner as well. Some of the highlights about this system that has been proposed and we're hoping to, will, will work out is 10, it'll involve 10 schools, 4.9 megawatts of energy, which is a huge amount, we're really excited about that. We expect $10 million in lifetime savings and 70,000 green, excuse me, 70,000 tons of greenhouse gases. And then that should offset about 35% of our ACPS electricity usage. And that's all we have, thank you so much.
Hi, John. We have PPAs already, you're talking specifically about PPAs, you're negotiating for the two new school buildings?
So this, actually, this PPA currently goes, will go on 10, 10, I shouldn't say additional, because in some cases, it will go on additional parts of the roofs on the schools that already have PPAs. This will put solar on all of our high schools, all of our middle schools, and a few more of our elementary schools.
Including the two new schools?
The two new schools are not included with this. We are hoping to, to be able to fund the solar out of the budget for the schools. It'll depend on how the bids come in for those projects, and if not, we will look to do another PPA at that time. One of the things that we've been really working on is getting solar developers, both for PPAs and for self-owned energy, or self-owned solar, getting kind of cooperative contracts in place, so that as soon as new roofs come on, whether it's for a new school or an existing school, we can come right in and do the solar, and we don't have to have this big delay and missing out on the opportunity to put solar on a nice, fresh roof.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that the environmental club at Murray sent a letter to the White House with their ideas, and Lennox Meslar got a letter back from Kamala Harris, and she was very excited about it, acknowledging her ideas for bettering our future environmentally, which is very cool. I just had a question, also, you had mentioned that this is funded by grants, but that that ends, when does that end, and what is the estimated cost to keep ACES up and running? Does anybody have that information?
So ACES is, doesn't require funding, it's just a, mostly community volunteers who serve. The liaison program, we pay the liaisons a stipend of $815 per year. In line with our other stipends. And we anticipate that we will be able to fund that for another year, this is out of some grant funding I got, that doesn't have any specific terms on it, but, but we have plans for most of the other money. So I think the cost, 815 times 24, came out of something in the, I'm sorry, I'll get back to that slide, I think it was on there, went too far. I didn't put it on there, somewhere in the ballpark of $24,000 a year.
A year, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question about the vermicomposting. Is that the one where it's in the boxes, or they're out in the garden?
They have theirs in their garden, but it's kind of, the way, the way Broadus Wood is, it's kind of in that, it's like in between the foliage area.
The courtyard?
So the worms are sort of free, it's like a free-range thing. I looked into vermiculture for our house, and I was like, that's kind of mean to the worms. But if they're out, like, sort of free range, it makes me feel a little bit better? So it sounds like they are free-range.
Free-range.
A little bit. Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have our middle school master plan, Matt Wortman.
Good evening, Chair Lee, members of the school board, and Dr. Haas. My name is Matt Wortman, Director of Building Services. In March of 2023, ACPS contracted with VMDO Architects, a local firm, to develop a comprehensive study and 20-year master plan for all of our middle schools. We have provided each of you with a copy of the final report, and we were excited to be able to present it to you this evening. I'm joined this evening by Ben Thompson from VMDO Architects, and Ben will now walk you through the steps we took and the recommendations made within the study.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be with you. Again, I'm Ben Thompson, VMDO Architects, and I'm going to walk you through tonight some of the processes and recommendations and outcomes of the middle school master plan that just concluded earlier this year. You're familiar with this slide. All the recommendations that you'll hear tonight are consistent with the ACPS vision, mission, values, and goals. And we know that there are a lot of factors that impact the success of the middle school student, the adolescent learner, and not least of which is the physical environment, and that's something we care about deeply as architects, and we know you care about that deeply as well. So the facilities, your school buildings, your sites that you are currently maintaining and operating, and the ones that you're planning for in the future, are really critical for a successful learning-for-all model. So this master plan was vetted through the lens of the strategic plan. And as Matt said, we were contracted back in the spring of last year to really look at some core issues facing the middle schools today, including capacity, growth, and equity across the district, and to do that over a 20-year plan. The impetus for this project, you can see some of these master plan goals and objectives, were centered around facing some issues that you're dealing with now, countywide growth and enrollment that's projected out to the next 10 years. We heard some interesting statistics about how even those projections are surprising in terms of what you're actually experiencing now, so something that you're going to need to be addressing in the near term and long term. Facility equity, so looking at the schools themselves relative to capacity and enrollment, but also looking at parity across all schools, and how that can serve to create the need for certain improvements at those schools. What are the unique aspects of each, and what are the community needs surrounding that, and then meeting the county's goals for sustainability, and looking at educational programming, and how each of those schools are stacked up against what your goals are. We cast a really wide net for engagement for this project. We had some robust stakeholder engagements, a lot of surveys that went out, and met with divisional leaders, met with students in the community to ask the question, to meet the needs of students, educators in the community, a middle school facility in Alamo County, must-have, and so some of the top responses that came out of all of those surveys were exceptional learning environments, adequate space for collaboration, flexible spaces, that the schools should be secure and safe environments for students, and that students have equitable access to resources and to staff for all age groups and abilities. We also met with a lot of students, over 100 students that were part of the, each school's advisory groups, and what we really wanted to do there was parse out some of the unique aspects of each of the school, and ask them, you know, what's working now? What do you love about your school? And what are some things that you could envision changing about your school or improving? And then what can you envision or imagine for the future of middle schools? So we got a lot of really great responses. All of these were collated and helped to establish some criteria that we could vet and discern from that list of criteria what would be the best approaches to each of these schools. So we really wanted to hear the voices of the community through this process. Three major scopes for this project as we engaged with ACPS. First, we went into each school and evaluated the existing conditions of those schools, looking at both the physical structures, but also kind of vetting them through a program at its baseline, the VDOE guidelines for schools, but also kind of an ideal program that we developed with ACPS to assess the educational adequacy of each of those schools. And then we, we made proposals for each of those schools, looking specifically at capacity and equity with each, within each school, but across the district. And then we took those recommendations, we applied costs to them, and then applied an escalation over the 20-year CIP, so that you could use those for your future planning. ACPS owns and operates five comprehensive middle schools, as you know, and one lab school. This is a map that shows each of those schools and their current capacities. That's the black number at the top. And below that line, we're showing the 10-year projected enrollment. This is the data that we had on hand at the time. So you can see those kind of comparisons of where these 10-year maximum enrollments will grow compared to their capacities. You'll also note the larger numbers there at the bottom of the screen, showing the existing overall middle school capacities. We add all that up. The current enrollment, that would be last year's enrollment, based on when this project was underway. And then the overall max, middle school enrollment maximum being the total maximum enrollment for each school over that 10-year period as it's projected. So a couple of observations. First of all, you can note pretty quickly that in terms of just overall capacity, you do have adequate capacity district-wide. It's just not necessarily in the right place, based on where the enrollments are growing, right? So those 10-year max enrollments will grow, and ultimately will exceed the max capacities at some schools. You're particularly seeing this at Henley, Journey, and Burley. They're starting to swell a little bit even now. But then, if you'll note Walton's capacity, the enrollments there that are projected are not going to nearly reach that capacity, right? So as a result, some of these schools have received more improvements over time, just based on where the developmental growth has happened and modernizations than some of the others. And that also includes lab school. Lab school's a program, an alternative program, that's in really high demand, but it can't offer more than it's offering right now, because it's limited based on its size. So this is where the equity and parity piece comes into play when we think about capacity and enrollment. This is the completed master plan, and this is a lot of information. I'm happy to answer questions at the end of it, but I'll just kind of breeze through this. You'll note that we're proposing a phased master plan for specific projects that have been prioritized. This map also shows how the capacities and the enrollments will actually change. You'll note that some of those capacities in these larger schools actually decrease, and I'll explain that in a minute. But overall, big picture, the master plan proposes that all schools, on some level, will receive improvements over time through renovations and additions, and potentially redistricting studies, should that be something that ACPS wants to consider, with the recognition that at some point in the future, a new middle school will likely need to be built, somewhere in the north, and somewhere around a 600-capacity school that will serve to alleviate those pressures of these northern schools. But that's also a long-term solution. That's not something you'll be planning for in the short term, from a budget standpoint. A better solution that we arrived at with this, this study was to look at expanding the lab school as a first-phase step, recognizing that it's something that offers a program to all schools, and so it would be an equitable way to think about how to alleviate the pressures at all of these schools, but also provide more admissions and enrollment. That would be an immediate phase-one plan. Phase two would look at Walton, which has received less improvements and less attention over the years, and consider some additions and renovations there, primarily renovations, but also that, just considering its enrollment, there may be a need for a redistricting study that can accompany renovations there, and imagining that kind of being backfilled with some of this planned enrollment. Phase four would look at renovating and improving all, the remainder of each of these schools. Our facility studies also looked at the sites, of course, recognizing that there's some unique features about each site. Some are larger than others, some are on shared campuses with shared amenities, others are smaller and located in downtown Charlottesville, like Community Lab and Burley. And all of, all of our recommendations for the sites are part of the facility study that you don't have with you tonight, but that is something that serves as an appendix to the report. This is a pretty telling slide that looks at different vintages over time of all of these schools together. This really probably best encapsulates the need for a middle school facility study. We're tracking, of course, the overall building areas, and we're comparing within each building what percentages of those areas have been additions and renovations. You can kind of see that across each slide of what, which schools have received more improvements over time. And in addition to the capacity and the enrollment that we're tracking at the very top, we're also looking at a metric we use, a ratio of area to student, which generally, for a middle school, around 150 square feet per student is what you want to be looking at, which is an indicator that helps you discern like how much elbow room you have in each of these schools. So it's pretty clear, as you look at the capacities versus the enrollments, which schools are feeling much tighter. Also, just to point out, you know, Henley and Journey were built at the same time. Henley, of course, has received more additions and renovations over time to handle that projected, or that growth that's happened. Walton was built in 1974, about nine years later, and it has not received the same kind of additions and renovations. It's built as essentially a carbon copy prototype of the other two schools. Burley is challenging in the sense that about 80% of its overall area has been devoted to additions or renovations, and as a result, there are a lot of challenging navigational steps to consider, including the site as well. So thinking about renovations there for the future and bringing that building up to educational standards is something that we've considered in our approach here. Lakeside is your newest school, but it's now 30 years, starting to see some, some wear, and starting to show a little bit of its age. And then lab school has been, I think, the least invested in school and probably in the most dire need of improvement. So the recommendations to look at lab school as a first step were really critical. As I mentioned, we, we've identified a number of different additions and renovations at different levels for each of these schools. That's what you see in the diagonal hatch there, recognizing that some of the existing spaces are going to stay as-is, they've been renovated already. So why would these capacities at these larger schools actually decrease? So in concept, and for just the purposes of this study, with the combination of expanding lab school, maybe backfilling Walton with enrollment, and also building a new school at some time within the next 10 years, these enrollments, in theory, will actually decrease. The numbers you see on the screen are just numbers, right, for the sake of conversation. But what that does is create capacity, or creates flexibility within each school. And that's flexibility for swing space when these renovations come online, moving students to one side, renovating, moving them back and renovating the other side. But it also creates flexibility in modernizations, where you're desiring larger, more adequate spaces to serve your, your curricular needs. So imagine taking a devising wall out of two classrooms, which are two teaching stations, and turning it into a larger CTE lab, something that's going to support your new programs, that would, in essence, decrease the capacity. And that would get back to kind of the overarching goal to better align the enrollments with their capacities district-wide. These improvement scopes, in terms of cost, we looked at breaking them down into different tiers. The tier one are costs that you would essentially, probably already be planning for in your annual maintenance budgets. They include like refreshes and new paint, or a new roof replacement if a boiler goes down. That's something that we've planned for, and we've itemized in the facilities assessments for you. The tier two and tier three scopes would be scopes that are largely, would be funded by your CIP, and would be part of these modernizations that we'd be looking to do. And within those tier two and tier three scopes, we would break down even further what would be considered light, moderate, heavy renovations, and those can have costs associated with them. The ultimate goal of the study is to provide, through this kind of phased plan, ACPS and Alamo County with a CIP improvement plan that looks at these projects escalated out over the 20-year CIP. This is a chart, it's a deliverable that we'd hand over to you. It's intended to be read left to right, and then also top to bottom. So all the phased projects are on the left, it shows where they're allocated across the fiscal years, and then the numbers that are tallied to the right are each project's overall project cost that would be anticipated based on the decisions that were made during this study. You'll see them in phase four on this particular slide. We put Burley, Journey, Henley, and Lakeside all together, just to compare their costs, recognizing each of them are going to have different levels of need. But there's also the reality that once you reach the point where you're building a new middle school over the next 10 years, you'll be assessing what these future projects will look like, and those will be escalated out in terms of priority, all tallying to a total phased capital improvement plan number that you can budget for kind of over the long term, but also year to year. So that was a very fast overview, a lot of information firehose, happy to answer questions. There's a lot in the report, a lot in the facilities assessments.
You made a comment when you were talking about a couple of the schools, said bringing Burley up to educational standards. Is that, are there different architectural or safety standards for different types of buildings, and what does that mean?
So I'll just try to be clear, the, it was twofold, our approach to assessing these schools. One was just the conditions of the school themselves, right? And so Burley, as an example, you know, it's had different vintages of additions, renovations. It's also challenging in terms of how you navigate through that building. There are a lot of ramps, and there are a lot of exits that take you to multiple levels of the site. So that was assessed in conjunction with taking a look at Burley's current programming, how each classroom is identified, and then discerning, you know, where are, where is Burley deficient in terms of maybe what VDOE might recommend as guidelines, or what we have kind of developed as an ideal program for a future middle school. So I think in conjunction with both of those, just vetting, you know, how does Burley stack up against those, those things? In terms of just standards of how educational programming works, I think, I think there, that's to be determined for each school, based on their current needs and how they're allocating their, their classrooms, to answer your question.
Well, having a middle school study has been on our CIP for years, so I'm glad to have it finally done. I think I know the answer to this, but do we have the demand at lab school to add 200 seats?
On that question, I was curious why we can't meet capacity at lab school now, right? It's like, set at 240, but we have it at 205, or maybe I'm reading your charts wrong. Are we at 205 for middle school or lab school?
That's a good question. We'll have to come back with you on that data. Thank you.
As part of this, did you do an ADA compliance overview, scope, not the right, audit, I guess would be the right word? And do you have any of those details, or could you share those details at a later date?
We could share with you at a later date. We did have that in mind as we went through each school. I think, again, Burley is a good example of one that is a little challenging. But with each proposal, and you'll see in some of the narratives, each of these proposals recommends some level of bringing the building up to compliance with local codes, local ADA. And so those are factored in to each of these scopes in terms of cost. And that may look different, you know, from school to school, just based on what we've
The cost of the new middle school, what, 150 million? Is that, includes playing fields and land? Is that includes playing fields and land acquisition and everything?
So probably not land acquisition.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about.
And so that does include though, so these are project costs, which includes the hard construction costs of each project, plus soft costs, which would be a design fees and then any other owner carried costs. That also includes site and construction costs.
I was just looking at that price tag because I know we talked about a new high school several years ago, and this is quite a bit more than that was.
That's right. So the other thing to note, the other thing to note is that all of these numbers that you see on the screen were priced in $20, $23, right? And then they were escalated out over, you know, 5.25% per year escalation, right? So these are just taking a current cost and then applying a value to it. And it can be pretty shocking, but that's where those numbers are coming from.
It's just very useful in terms of planning and thinking about capital going forward. I mean, right now, we have these two schools in the works and one going to be in the planning stages in the next couple. But all of these, all of this data is very useful.
What's the rationale behind having the redistricting study in 2032? Why so far out?
So that, the discussions around redistricting, you know, we looked at a lot of different avenues we could take for handling capacity. Of course, redistricting is one of them, looking at feeder patterns and moving boundaries. The thought was, rather than outright just propose that, we should look at a number of different combinations of renovations, additions. You know, another way to handle increasing capacity is just to continue to build on to your existing schools. You could do that at Henley, you can do that at Journey, right? So particularly for Walton, considering that the enrollments, the projected enrollments there are so low compared to its capacity, the priority for Walton being a kind of a second phase centered around discussions about can we improve Walton and also consider a redistricting study that would look at increasing its enrollments through redistricting for the sake of equity and parity. So a redistricting study was what we had placed there based on the recommendations of ACPS to discern, you know, is this the right thing to do? And that's something you can decide, you know, when you get there. Is this how we want to handle additions and renovations at Walton? And, you know, with that redistricting study and additions and renovations, you would be improving Walton, maybe proving that, improving it to the point where there's a desire for that enrollment to increase naturally, but also through a redistricting study discern, is this the right thing to do? There would obviously be a redistricting study centered around a new middle school in the fiscal year 10.
So Matt, are we to just accept this as information? What do you need from us?
That's correct. There's no action warranted, it's just, it's a study that was conducted for the board to receive as information.
And if I could chime in on process and next steps. At the October business meeting, we are bringing an update recommendation for our CIP. It is, Long Range Planning does a biannual report, so we're in the off year of that, so they will not have a full report, but we will have an update to our CIP. So our plan, based on feedback tonight, is to incorporate these recommendations into that CIP. You will likely see similar timing on phases one, two, and three. We are having some staff conversations around phase four. The request and the recommendation on staff is actually to move those forward. There's existing needs at Burley and all the schools, and there's no reason other than funding to do them more concurrently with the capacity project. So that's probably the only change that you'll see from this plan to our CIP recommendations. At that point, that's what you will need to approve and act on, is the overall CIP recommendation, which will incorporate these.
Great. Thank you, Rosalyn.
All right. Thanks very much, Rosalyn and Matt.
If I could too, I just want to give a shout out to Lisa Walker on our staff. She was actually going to be here this evening. Unfortunately, she's ill, but she's been the point person that's really kind of spearheaded this effort for the last year and a half, really. So just want to give kudos and a shout out to her.
This is really a great study. Thank you.
Certainly hope that the General Assembly can pass a bill to help us fund some of this, that we'll actually get through the governor. Thank you.
Dedicated sales tax.
And then Matt is back for building service updates.
Okay. Hello again. I'm really excited to be able to be here tonight to give you our annual summer update. This is always an exciting report to be able to give and to celebrate the great work our team has done. As Ben and John both eloquently said, everything we do is rooted in our mission and vision and our strategic plan, really kind of centered around goal three. But I really think, as John really put really well, I think the work we do really does have a huge impact on the other goals and making big strides to ensure that we're engaging and allowing for our students to really thrive. All right. So summer projects, and I should say too, some of these are really the last fiscal year because some of these we were able to actually get done during the school year. But of course, we have our annual roof replacements projects every year. We tackled three this year, at Ivy Elementary, Burley Middle School, and Monticello High School. You can see, we're just talking about our middle schools, so you can see Burley there. We can actually see the leading edge flags up, and so we really kind of did this whole section as well as this lower section and the annex just out of frame. So really extensive summer re-roofing program this year. Lots of HVAC upgrades and replacements. You can see the list of schools there. We're in a period of our HVAC replacement program where a lot of these rooftop units are coming due for replacement. They've got a life expectancy of about 20 to 25 years. And so we're just, every year, we're trying to get through as many as we can, and in the process, trying to upgrade and improve the efficiency from over existing systems in light of our sustainability efforts. But we have a lot of these units that are coming due for replacement. So we're trying to get through them as best we can, and we'll have a lot more next summer too. As we do every year, we renovate bathrooms. So this year, we were at Greer. You can see there are nice new tile work, new partitions, really kind of, I should have put a before photo, I apologize, but huge improvement from before, so it looks really nice. It turned out well.
Gecko Green.
That's right. Lots of athletics upgrades over the last year. You'll recall a year ago, we replaced Monticello's turf field. So between the football and fall and spring sports this year, we replaced the turf fields at Albemarle and Western. I'll just say too, anecdotally, we went with a different infill product this year in light of our sustainability efforts. You know, a lot of turf fields are a chrome rubber. We actually went with a natural product, it's called Brock Fill. It's like a fibrous material, a natural product. So it's a little bit softer and more sustainable. And the other great thing that it does, it actually reduces the heat on the field. And so last fall, when Monticello was the only school that had this new product, they were actually having football practice days on days where the other schools couldn't because of the heat on the field. And so there's a lot of really great benefits to these fields and upgrades that we were able to make. And of course, we resurfaced the track out at Western this summer. This is a progress shot, so you can obviously see the line work wasn't painted when we took this photo, but that'll be a great improvement for the track and field program out at Western Albemarle. Electrical upgrades, we installed, there on the right, you see Holly Mead's new generator. At this point, we only have one more school remaining that does not have backup emergent life safety power. That's Burley, so that's the next school on our list, and then we will be going into replacement period of cycle. So we're getting really close to having backup power at all of our schools. The lead time on generators is still insane, it's about nearly two years from the time you order, believe it or not. So these are lengthy projects to implement. We also replaced the switchgear at Red Hill this summer. You can see that there on the left, and that'll really kind of provide better, more consistent power capabilities at that school. Western parking expansion, this was a, this is actually outside the CIP maintenance fund, this was a separately funded project by the Board of Supervisors in response to requests that you all made. So we were able to get that work done. You can see the extension there from the parking that was previously existing. We added 50, sorry, I should look this up, I think it's 52 or 54 spaces. And here's just a few other closeups. We do still have a little bit of ongoing work for the stormwater detention pond, but that work is expected to be completed in the next two to three weeks. The parking lot is available for use, however. As we do every summer, several building updates throughout all of our facilities, lots of flooring and painting updates. We made a pretty heavy push at Stony, I don't know if that's me, sorry. We made a pretty heavy push at Stony Point this past year. You may recall a year ago when we presented our facility, internal facility condition assessment for all of our elementary schools, that Stony Point was the lowest scoring school on that list. And so we tried to do as much as we could at that facility with the funds available to us to at least try to make a small dent in the needs there. Just to give you a quick financial summary of the work that our team did, again, this is fiscal year, the last fiscal year, so not necessarily just summer, but we implemented $13.9 million worth of work in all of our facilities. You can see the feeder pattern breakdown there. Approximately 9% or $1.23 million was in our Title I schools, and nearly $1 million went towards our transformation schools. And just to give you a few quick operational updates, as we do every summer, our custodial team waxed over 1.2 million square feet of floors in the nine to 10 week period. In the last fiscal year, our maintenance team completed almost 7,500 work orders. And in the summer alone, we completed nearly 1,800 work orders. And you can see in that pie chart there on the right, the breakdown of how those work orders shook out. And of course, our ongoing projects, we are continuing to work on Mountain View Upper Elementary School, High School Center Two, and the Albemarle High School second floor corridor addition. I did want to provide one brief update to the board, and I think an email may have gone out to the board, but just so the public is also aware, we did have to delay this project by one year. The unfortunate reason for that was just due to timing relative to when we could get steel for the project. And we have some really tight deadlines that need to occur in order to build this addition over an occupied facility, and we just simply could not get the steel in time to get that done this past summer. So we've unfortunately had to delay the start of that work until next summer. But in doing so, I think we'll be better prepared, better equipped, and we'll be able to rock and roll with it next summer. Does create a few complexities with the High School Center Two that will be going on, but we have a great team and are working through that, and I feel confident that we'll be successful. So with that, I just want to say thank you for your support. And then this is our Capitol team, all this work is really done by these folks. It's, we've got a great team of people, our custodians, our maintenance crew, everybody works really hard during the summer to make our schools look great, and I think they did a fantastic job. Our schools looked excellent on day one. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
The parking lot at Western has really improved traffic flow significantly, so I don't know if that was an intended bonus or not, but it has made the traffic there much, much easier to get in and out during the day. So that has been really nice, and the track is also really fantastic. So just throwing that out there, great job.
My question is on the parking lot too. Compared to the building, where is the parking lot located? Up on the highway or, you know, on 250 or where?
Yeah, so let me go back to that slide, see if I can point it out from the photo. So two, so this, we're taking this photo from the roof of the building, actually. So you could see it. So it's looking back towards 250, you can, whoops, I was going to try.
It's connected to the, it's connected to the old senior lot.
Correct.
Yeah, so you, there's kind of a drive-through now. When you're coming in from 250, you can pull into the new lot and it connects to the old lot. So it basically creates a loop for parents that are picking up their kids and seniors leaving. It's made it a lot easier to get out in the afternoon.
Right, okay. Yes, okay, thanks.
I was just going to say, thank you and your team for all the hard work. I almost have this picture that like, that bell rings and the buses leave on the last day of school, and you guys all like jump into action and are like, okay, it's time to work.
That does happen.
They're like the Santa's elves that like rappel down.
Literally, I have this picture.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the schools look great, so.
Oh, thank you very much for your work, and thank you to everyone in Building Services too. So with the Albemarle High School addition next year, so is that something that we should be considering when we consider calendar, the calendar for the next school year? Is that going to take as much time, basically like start of summer when the elves rappel in, to very, like to the start of school?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I know the calendar committee is underway. Our position is yes, we need all the time we can get.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks very much, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have other business by board members and superintendent. I know that Dr. Berlin, you have an item.
I do. Charlie, I have a letter that I would like to read if I can, and then I'd like to move that we take a board vote on it, if you think that's appropriate.
We could, since you sent it out ahead of time, I think we could probably go ahead and take the vote.
Perfect.
And then you can read and make a motion.
Perfect. I would like to make a motion to send a letter to the members of the Virginia DOE, families and community members about the board's, a statement of the board's feelings on the DOE's new school performance and improvement system.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Ms. Spillman. Is there any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Not opposed? All right, please read.
Dear members of the Virginia Department of Education, families and community partners, the Virginia Department of Education's new school performance and improvement system, which was introduced earlier this summer, places significant emphasis on standardized test scores and graduation rates as key indicators of school performance. According to state officials, these measures aim to hold schools to higher educational standards and enhance accountability as detailed in the department's announcement. While the Albemarle County Public School Board agrees that accountability is essential, we have concerns that the new measures may fail to support students who require additional time and resources to achieve academic success, particularly students facing language barriers, disabilities, or other learning challenges. We are especially concerned with the on-track and off-track summative categories. With data modeling based on the 23-24 school year, the new framework suggests that over 55 of Virginia schools are either classified as off-track or need intensive support. While the school board firmly believes that all schools have room for improvement to ensure that every student can grow and thrive, both academically and socially emotionally, we find the claim that over half the schools in our state and likely in our district fall into these two categories difficult to imagine. We share the concern recently raised by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents that the state must take additional time to perform more accurate data modeling, which would fairly represent the true performance of the state schools. The current framework as it stands does not consider important variables and risks categorizing schools too harshly without the necessary context or support. Albemarle County Schools, like many districts across Virginia, has seen an increase in the number of ELL students enrolling in our schools. These students bring meaningful linguistic and cultural diversity to our classrooms, enriching the educational experience for all. However, these students also deserve both support and time to acclimate to our education system, for which the current framework does not allow. We are also particularly concerned with two specific changes, the reduction of English Language Learner semester guidance from 11 semesters to just three semesters, and the reduction of the minimum end size for the student group identification under the ESSA from 30 students to 15 students. These reductions will identify more schools as needing support due to lower achievement and/or test participation, yet no additional state resource have been allocated to help schools meet these increasing demands. We urge the Virginia Department of Education to revisit these changes and take time to refine this new framework, ensuring it's not refine this new framework, ensuring it's not only rigorous, but fair and supportive of the diverse needs of all students. Accountability is vital, but it must be balanced with an understanding of our challenges our schools and students face. Without this balance, we risk failing that very students this framework aims to uplift. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. We look forward to continued dialogue and collaboration to ensure that our schools remain places where all students can succeed. Albemarle County School Board.
Here, here. Thanks very much, Dr. Berlin, for bringing that forward. Are there any, any other board business? Nope. All right, we're adjourned.